And gentlemen, I'd call the meeting to order. If you would, please, I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your cell phones, including us. We're usually the ones that violate our own rule there. And if you would, please stand and join us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance led by our vice mayor.
Dear God, we come tonight to bow our heads and open this meeting in prayer. We ask for your blessings on this meeting. We ask that your wisdom would guide us as we seek to accomplish the goals on tonight's agenda. Thank you for the opportunity you give us to serve you and to serve others. May our actions and our attitudes please you this evening. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So for those of you visiting us tonight, we have a custom to begin our meetings with a historical or interesting fact about Temple Terrace or the region. So we rotate that around, and tonight happens to be my night. And I don't know how I came up so quickly. It seems like I just did this, but City Clerk, I think, is playing games with the schedule here. But so when I first started contemplating this idea, I wasn't sure if there was a direct Temple Terrace connection to this story or not. But as I did some research into it, I found that there actually is a direct connection to the story. So bear with me, and I'll make that evident to everybody. So during World War II, Florida became a very important state to our nation, partly because of the amount of coastline we had and the German U-boats and so forth, patrolling on both the Gulf and the Atlantic. But the primary reason we were so important was because our weather was so good, you could do training year-round, particularly aircraft training, pilot training, bomber training. And so the Drew Field Army Air Base is where Tampa International Airport is located now. That used to be Drew Field. That was the military base here. But the needs quickly outstripped the size of Drew Field, so they built MacDill Army Air Base, which of course is turned into MacDill Air Force Base, which is still here. But there's a lesser-known airfield built during World War II here also, and it was called Hillsborough Air Base. And it was located, Brian, if you'll bring this up, it was located here, if you can see that. And that location right here is where Adventure Island is now. This is Busch Gardens now, and this is USF now. So that's what it looked like. This is a 1957 picture. So what happened was the military built this airbase in 1943. Oh, I'll show you. Yeah, yes. If you look over here, this is Temple Terrace. That's Florida College right there, which 1957 it was Florida College. So that's here. This is Busch Boulevard. This is Fowler Avenue up here on the north side. So they built this in 1943, and it was used primarily to train P-51 pilots, although they did do some other types of aircraft, too, that flew out of here. And they used to use this area here as the bombing range. They dropped dummy bombs from airplanes here because this was on their property. They're still digging up some of those dummy bombs from when they do projects and excavation utility work and stuff on USF campus. They're still finding these things. So there's some interesting things about this. The base was closed down in 1945 as the war wound down, and it was transferred over to Hillsborough County, and it was renamed Henderson Airfield, Henderson Field. It was named after a county commissioner named Henderson. I don't know anything about that person. Was renamed Henderson Field. The records are a little scant here. The story officially says it was used as a civilian airport for a while until the mid to late 50s. This picture is 1957. There are some buildings in the picture, so maybe that's true. But I can't find anybody who remembers it being used as a civilian airport, so I don't know how much it was used. I do know that in 1946, when the debate turned to where to put Tampa International Airport, there was considerable debate over to put it on Drew Field or to put it on Henderson Field. And obviously Drew Field won out, and that's where that came to be Tampa International Airport. This field was closed down somewhere in the latter half of the 1950s. And when I was a kid in the 1970s, it still looked pretty much like that, or a lot of the runways were still there. I remember my dad teaching my older sister to drive on these runways. So it was still there until recent years. Today, this is all that's left. That's it. And if you match up these two maps from today and from 1957, this road is Bogan Villa, White Way, Bogan Villa. This is Fortieth Street. This is Forty-S sixth Street. That was the eastern border of the airbase. So where that piece of pavement is still left, right across the street from Adventure Island, this is all Bush, oh, okay, I was done with it anyway. That is White Way, which turns into Bogan Villa, which runs right across where the center of the airbase was and over here. This is Thirtyeth Street, and if you look, the base actually extended west of Thirtyeth Street, right? So the piece of pavement remaining is right in here somewhere, right near the middle of where the airfield was. Another interesting thing is here's the entrance to the base off of Busch Boulevard. Right here is the last remaining building. Doesn't show up well in this old picture, but Mel's Hot Dogs is the last remaining building of the airbase. And I can't for the life of me figure out what purpose that building served, being way down here when everything else was up here. And it's not near the entrance, so it wasn't a guard shack. I don't know what it was. So I called Mel, who's on the building since 1973, so it was only 30 years old when he, I lost my place here, when he bought, it was only 30 years old, and he doesn't know what purpose it served either. So we do know it's an original building, the only original building, but I don't know what purpose it served. So I promised you to tie this to Temple Terrace. Well, here we go. I found this undated photo in USF Special Collections. This is a not vertical aerial shot from an angle. This is the boundary of Hillsborough, of Henderson Field. This is Busch Boulevard. There's Mel Hot Dog Building right down here on the corner. This is Forty-S sixth Street. It runs right up Forty-S sixth Street is the eastern boundary. It goes up to what Serena, I think it is now, cuts over, goes up here to White Way, and goes over here to Fifty-S sixth Street. So Fowler Avenue, everything on the west side of Fifty-S sixth Street, all the way down to White Way, including this building, was on the property of Henderson Field. Including where Ace Hardware is, the veterinary, the funeral home, this is my neighborhood, right? This, of course, is all USF. This was, I never knew that my house is on the property of Henderson Field, but it is. So if you look at that from 1957, you can see Pleasant Terrace, that's 122nd, that's 127th, and this is 131st up here where Ace Hardware is. Also, that's Fletcher Avenue. And if you look, they bulldozed right through the swamp and filled in, and Fletcher Avenue goes right through the swamp. So if you look on the north side and you see the swamp, you look on the south side where they're building the stadium right here, guess what? That's going to be an interesting project because they're building that on a swamp, too. So anyway, thank you for bearing with me. That's the product of a lot of research for a three-minute fun fact, but it got to be kind of interesting, so thank you. Okay. Do you know all that? I even interviewed Jack Ritter about this. So I did a lot of work on this, interviewed Mel. Okay. What's that? Oh, yeah, I read all kinds of stories about nefarious activity that used to go on. Yeah, of course, I know nothing about any of that, but. So we'd like to welcome a couple of guests here. Our first presentation is from, I don't know if you've met, had an opportunity to meet him or not yet, but Mr. Greg Basham is the newly appointed president to King High School. Terrific guy, very informative. I've been down, we've had several conversations, and I look forward to all the wonderful things going on at King, and he's here to tell us about some of them.
Good evenings. Good to see you all. I'm gonna, I do have some items that you can peruse later on after the presentation and so that, because I am going to cover some things for you, but if you have some things that you'd like to take a look at. First off, I want to tell you how much I appreciate, I did have a chance to meet Mr. Ross over the summer. He came, he reached out to me, and we had a chance to sit down. I actually found him at the Fourth of July Parade. We both weren't very far from each other. I came out when the King students participated in the parade, marched it with them, which was unbelievable to them, but I'm a former band director, so it was, you know, I told them, I was like, there's no way I wasn't going to be here with you all today. And it was really great to have that be my first experience, to see so many people lined up along the streets and see really, I mean, I just, I told my wife, I said, it was a little slice of Americana today, right? Because it was just, it was a parade for the community, and there were a lot of people out there, and they cheered the kids on, and the kids showed up and did a great job. I've also had an opportunity to interact with several people on the City of Temple Terrace staff because we have a homecoming parade and homecoming activities coming up here at the end of the month in two weeks. We will be having the homecoming parade there around the country. Club starts at Temple Terrace Elementary School and ends there. We had a, the folks from Parks and Recreation Department came out, the fire department and the police station came over to make sure that you had both myself, who's the new principal at King this year, but also a new SGA president and new SGA advisor. So they came over to help us out and made sure we were straight, brought us a map. And it was, I told them all, it was very informative. I was so glad that they came over and took the time to have the meeting with us. I say all that to say is, one of the things that I want to talk about is just the fact that, you know, King High School, the students from Temple Terrace do go to school there, and we take our partnership with the City of Temple Terrace in helping educate the students in this community and helping them build a, be successful and go forth into what's next for them very seriously. And I love and appreciate the way that all of the folks from the City of Temple Terrace have been coming over to let me know, listen, we want to partner with you, we want to help you, we want to make sure that the school's successful and that the students at the school are successful, so, you know, please reach out to us and talk to us about what we can do to help make sure that that happens. And so that's important because we know in addition to, we know from research that the A number one most important influence on student learning is the teacher. There's a ton of research over that, okay? But that has to be partnered with and undergirded by both parental support and community support. So it really takes those three things. There's a bunch of research on, also on what influence the principal has on student learning and what goes on in the school. But those three things that I bring up first are the most important because that teacher at the, if they're planning and have a connection with their students in a positive relationship, then there is so much that they can bring forth out of student learning. But that community support and parental support or family support are things that definitely undergird that as well. And so my experience in my short time at King is that we have those things, okay? We do have some young people that have some challenges that they're working through as they work toward graduation. As you all know, the state of Florida has some testing requirements that students must meet in order to get a diploma, and we have quite a number of young people that have done very well, but we have some young people that need some support, and we have done some things here early on to make sure that they have that support. One of the things I want to mention to you is, is talking about community partnerships is, first thing is, is that we participated in the Fourth of July Parade this summer, and we have Temple Terrace Reads coming up next, so we're going to be very involved with that as well, and have already met with the staff and are planning to be over at Temple Terrace Reads. I was telling a couple of the city council members before the meeting that I already reached out to the principal at Temple Terrace Elementary and planning to have some of the high school students about once a month go to neighboring elementary schools and read to some of the young people at the elementary schools. That's important for the younger students to have older kids come and read with them, but I also think it's important for the older students to be able to go back and read to the younger students because it helps them reflect on their reading and thinking about their presentation, giving back to their community and being a member of the community, right? So it helps them think about the, and then as they're talking to those students, we also know that if you can teach someone about something, that you know that that's when you really start to internalize those things, right? So that will help them internalize how important education is and what it is that they do on a daily basis while they're at school. We're going to work closely and partner with businesses in the immediate vicinity of King High School. In fact, Ms. Robinson, our Assistant Principal of Administration, who's still relatively new to King, she's been there about 12 months now. She has been very active going to see the businesses right around the school and partnering with them so that we can make sure that our students are safe and that we have eyes on them at all times, even when they leave our campus, right? So we want to make sure that, you know, as a part of the community and as a part of those businesses right by us, that we're making sure that the students are making good decisions and good choices, and when they're not, making sure that their parents are aware, and then also if there's anything that we can do to mitigate that by partnering with those businesses, and we certainly want to make sure that we do that. We have a business partnership with Gas Bars. Of course, you know, Jimmy is a graduate of King High School, and I had a wonderful opportunity to go meet with him. And I know if you've met with him, you know that he is quite a friendly guy, and it was two, two and a half hours, I think, with him and Coach McEluso, but it was absolutely enjoyable, and I learned so much about the school, the history of the school, and what are some of the things that we can do to make sure that we continue to have King be a beacon of the community as we go forward into the next, or 63 years, I'd like, you know, we're going to go into the next 60 years as we move forward. The PTSA is also actively getting out and building some partnerships with local businesses. They have some plans this year for making some beautification projects with inside the building in order to make some, some things a little nicer for both students and teachers, which is going to be very nice. There's a new group, nonprofit, Let's Roar KHS, which is a group of alumni from the class of 1969 who came and saw us during pre-planning and have been very involved. If you, they have their own website and everything, if you want to find out more about them, but they've been very involved. They've already been over to the school several times, not just in terms of making donations, but looking for ways to engage with the students and have interaction with them as, as in, we're looking towards some mentorships and things like that. And then, like I said, the students are going to be going to read at local elementary schools. I know I only have 15 minutes, and I want to save you guys some time to ask me questions. You know, obviously, I'm a teacher, so I could talk for 15 minutes, no problem, right? But I did want to, before I leave today, I do want to share with you a did you know? Because when I got to King, the first thing I did when they made me principal was I said, well, I'm going to go on the website. Let's see what I can find out about what the kids did last year. It was not very successful. So one of the things that I want you all to be aware of is that, and I've told the parents and the students, that go to the website, okay? There's going to be information on there, and there is information on there about what's going on at the school, things that we have coming up, ways to get involved, but more importantly, the great things that the kids are doing. There were a whole bunch of items that were in our yearbook last year about things that the kids had done that were all very positive, but I could not find them displayed publicly anywhere. So one of the things that I'm doing is making sure those are on there. So I got some did you knows for you before we leave today. Did you know that six students were selected to receive the 2023 National Merit Scholarships last year from King? Twenty-three last year. So there were six students that were selected that actually got the scholarship. Just this past week on Wednesday, we had 12 students selected as National Merit semifinalist. Twelve, okay? There's only one school in Hillsborough County that has more. Twelve. In 2023, we had two students recognized for perfect attendance from kindergarten through 12th grade. They didn't miss school for 13 years, and through the pandemic, that's amazing, right? So two out of five, the district only, the district only had five kids across the entire school district out of 215,000 students, and we had two of those five. Adelia Looney was awarded a 2023 American Voices Medal for her essay, "I Will Speak" from the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, which had published in their national publication that they put out. King football team was district champions in 2022. In 2023, our King IB graduates received over $5 million in scholarship offers. King students represent nearly 30 different languages and cultures. So one of the wonderful things that I have noticed about King while I'm there is a couple of things. One, that it is absolutely a cross-section of the world and society that we live in. But more importantly, and I was telling Ms. Fernandez this earlier, is that, you know, I've worked at a number of institutions in the last 28 years as an educator, and the King students are among the most courteous that I've ever worked with. Even when we might be having a challenge, their disposition when talking to me is, again, the best way to describe it is courteous. They, not, there's no yelling and screaming, it's a conversation. They, they listen, they share their side, we talk it through, and then we've been able to move forward with whatever possible solutions we think there are. And so I think that that's important, particularly in this day and age, because we, there are adults in this world who handle themselves that way when they're experiencing a challenge. I'm sure we've all been someplace at the stoplight or something where someone has honked the horn at us or yelled at us, or, and it didn't go the way we thought it would. So I want to, again, thank you for the time today, and, you know, at any time at all, if you'd like to come over and visit, come on campus, take a walk with me, I'd be happy to show you all the amazing things that are going on. I'm going to, I do want you to know, it is a school, right? And they are young people, and sometimes they make bad choices. But I'm 53 years old, and sometimes I make a bad choice. So it's how you, how they hand, I tell them all the time, it's what you do next that's going to be the judge of what goes on, right? What, it's not that you shouldn't make a mistake or that you can't have, make a mistake. What do you do next, right? So we're not just learning about what goes on intellectually, we're learning about what you do in life, so.
Thank you, Mr. Basham. Council members?
Welcome.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I know you and I talked several times, and I invited you to come, and so I'm glad you did, and those are very interesting things that you said. I'd like to see more of those kind of things out there because people don't always have a perception. They latch on to something that might have been true 20 years ago, and that's their reality forever, so.
Well, we've got some opportunities for the students to do some things. I know they're going to be participating in the Veterans Parade, Veterans Celebration as well. And so, you know, we're, I think that what we'll find is, is they're doing a solid job, Mr. Ross.
Well, thanks for spending the time with us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Next, we have, I think, Gabby Nickerson from our Neighborhood Liaison to Temple Terrace. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. So first off, I want to say thank you all. Thank you, Mayor, council members, for giving us the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. As you said, my name is Gabby Nickerson. I'm the Hillsborough County District Two Neighborhood Liaison, which is, we are in District Two. And I have with me tonight Stephanie Agliano, Hillsborough County Customer Engagement Division Director, and Julie Nail, Hillsborough County Neighborhood Relations Manager. Our role-
Let me just stop you for a second because we have it set for three minutes, and it needs to be set for, so you can set it for, set it for 13 now.
Thank you.
Okay.
So our role is to provide programs and services that help support neighborhoods, whether they are in the cities or suburbs. Hillsborough County recognizes the value of our neighborhoods. They add vibrancy and are instrumental in shaping our county, giving it a big personality with many diverse neighborhoods. So it's our goal to help neighborhoods stay vibrant and strong through programs that foster healthy, safe, engaged neighborhoods. We do this in several different ways. First is information, which gives neighborhoods the opportunity to engage with their county. We promoted neighborhood programs, initiatives, and opportunities relevant to neighborhoods, and share county messaging, that is news they can use, as well as provide opportunities to participate in county-wide surveys and initiatives. Another way that we help support neighborhoods is through education. We actually just had our Neighborhood Expo, which provides the opportunity to learn more about Hillsborough County departments. With, we also included other partnering agencies, as well as neighborhood leaders, who shared both their successes and lessons learned on key topics. By the way, these sessions are avail, will be available on our webpage, which is hcflgov.net/neighborhoods. They'll be available shortly, so you can watch replays of the sessions from the expo. One of our favorite programs that we have is Backstage Pass Program. This gives neighborhood and community leaders the opportunity to learn, see, and experience Hillsborough County behind the scenes with presentations, tours, and demonstrations. Now let's talk about imagination. Temple Terrace neighborhoods are eligible to apply for our Neighborhood Mini Grant. In fact, the timing is perfect. We are getting ready to launch this program in October. This mini grant encourages neighborhoods to be creative and think about a project that will help them foster a healthy, safe, engaged neighborhood. It's an opportunity to tell their neighborhood's story and leave a legacy. Mini grant recipients can be awarded up to $5,000 for their projects. So how will neighborhood, neighborhoods know about these programs and services? Well, they would need to connect to Neighborhood Relations. We have a list, a neighborhood listing, which is easy and free to sign up. Neighborhoods can visit hcflgov.net/neighborhoods or call Neighborhood Relations, which would be myself, Gabby Nickerson, your District Two Neighborhood Liaison, and my phone number is 813-895-0146. We use this listing to keep our neighborhoods in the know. As you can imagine, the county is a very big place, so if we don't know you're out there, then we can't share information about our programs, services, and initiatives with our neighborhoods. We can't thank you enough for the opportunity tonight to share with you what Hillsborough County Neighborhood Relations has to offer and can provide, and we look forward to engaging with Temple Terrace neighborhoods in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nickerson. Council members, any questions?
I have a question.
Council member, Fernandez.
So with the neighborhood grants-
Yes.
How, what constitutes a neighborhood? How would you, what kind of group can apply?
So civic associations, homeowners associations, special taxing districts, and am I missing anything? I think that's, that's the ones that we would have apply.
So in the case of Temple Terrace, the majority of our city is not in homeowners associations. How would, so you're saying then, if you are a general resident of Temple Terrace, you can't apply for the neighborhood grants because you don't have a civic group or homeowners association?
Yes, ma'am, yes. They have to be in one of the organized neighborhoods, so HOA, Civic Association, Special Taxing District.
Okay, so is a civic association like a volunteer group, like Rotary or Women's Club?
No, I don't believe so, no, yeah.
What's this, well, can you define what a civic organization is so that residents-
I'm going to have Stephanie come up because she can answer that better.
That's a great question. So a civic association is an organized neighborhood. An HOA, they have required mandatory dues. A civic association is a neighborhood that wants to come together and is either chartered or has bylaws, but voluntarily dues are voluntary. They can't mandate, they don't require, and we do help neighborhoods who feel they want to become organized. We can help direct them and, you know, show them how, what they need to do in order to become an organized neighborhood, so we can, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Council? Ladies, thank you so much for-
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I know after a long day of work, it's not fun to come to a meeting, but thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, our next item of business is a- Okay, our next item of business is an appointment to the Municipal Code Enforcement Board. There is one vacancy on the MCEB for a regular member for a term extending from September 19th, 2023 until September 19th, 2026. The city received an application from Juan Gomez, who has experience in construction and is a certified roofer. I believe Mr. Gomez is here. Would you like to make any comments? It's not mandatory, I'd just like to extend the offer.
No, I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Okay, council, is there a motion?
I move to approve Juan Gomez for Municipal Code Enforcement Board.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no nays? Mr. Gomez, congratulations, you are appointed to a term from 20, September 19th, 2023 till September 19th, 2026, and thank you for stepping up and volunteering, and look forward to your service.
Thank you.
Next item is appointments to the School Support Committee. There are two vacancies on the School Support Committee for terms extending from September 19th, 2023 until September 19th, 2026. The city received two applications. The first applicant is Darlene Palmer, who has past experience teaching pre-K students. The second applicant is Karen Adler, who has many years of volunteer service in youth ministry, as well as being an active PTSA member at King High School. I don't know if these folks are here or not, because I don't know them. Okay. So, council members, is there a motion?
Move to approve Darlene Pittman and Karen Adler to the School Support Committee for terms.
Second.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead. You're done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays. Darlene Palmer and Karen Adler are hereby appointed to the School Support Committee, and we thank them for stepping up and for their in-service. Very good. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of our August 15th meeting? And if so, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays, the minutes are adopted. Next, are persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda, or items on the consent agenda? There are forms in the back of the room, right near that door in that corner. If you wish to address the mayor and council, please submit one of those forms, and we would be happy to hear from you. We do have a 30-minute time limit on this section of our meeting. I don't think there's enough people here to exceed that, but I like to read that once in a while, so people don't think we just make that up. And what we do is, if we have more people than we can fit into the 30 minutes, then we stop, we continue with the meeting, and then we resume public comment at the end of the meeting. So, we have a three-minute time limit for all speakers, and we do ask that you approach the podium, begin with your name and city of residence, so we can have that on the record. I currently have one request to speak from Shahab Ahmed. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. My name is Shahab, I live in the city of Temple Terrace. I'm here on behalf of CARE. CARE is the largest Muslim civil rights organization in the country. CARE Florida, our Florida chapter, services over half a million Muslims in the state of Florida, and we are very proud to be headquartered, to be located, right here in Temple Terrace on 56th. I'm here because Temple Terrace, the city of Temple Terrace, has one of the strongest Muslim populations in the state of Florida. Some of the largest mosques in the Tampa area and in the state of Florida are right here in Temple Terrace. Some of our largest Islamic schools, K to 12 Islamic schools in the state of Florida, in this Tampa area as well, are right here on 56th, and, in fact, one of them is right across the street from City Hall. And I should note that each, each of these Islamic schools are filled to max capacity. There, there are hundreds of students on these waiting lists, which, which contribute in the, these families, they contribute to the economy in the millions. There are thousands of Muslim families in the city of Temple Terrace. Now, I am here on behalf of the Muslim population in, in the Tampa area and in the city of Temple Terrace, because since our constituency, since your constituency is largely Muslim, I want to tell you about a really extraordinary first for the Muslim community, for the city of Temple Terrace, which is our first-ever Florida Muslim Community Survey, which we have just completed. We have had over thousands of people respond to the survey, and it gives us insight into what the Muslim community thinks about things such as political leaning, are they left or right? Things such as, are Muslims, do they support gun ownership or not? As well as things such as, what percentage of the Muslim community has been approached by FBI, by federal agents? And I should note that the number is disproportionately higher in the Muslim community. With all that being said, our gala is coming up on September 30th, at 6:00 PM at the Tampa Airport Marriott. And during this gala, we're gonna be sharing with the community insights from this survey. There's a lot more than what I just, than, than what I just mentioned. Everyone here is requested to join us, to register, to join us. As our elected officials, our executive director should have reached out to you, Abdullah Jabir, and requested for your presence. If not, I would love to speak with everyone more about it afterwards. Thank you so much for your time. I have some of these for you. God bless, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed. I was gonna ask you if you had something to leave with us, because I have not gotten an invitation.
Okay. Well, that's definitely your-
The information is there?
Yes, sir, and afterwards, I can give you a personal invitation as well.
Okay. Is there, is your contact information here?
No, sir.
Can we provide it to you?
I can.
Yeah, if you don't mind leaving your cell phone number, if you, a number I can reach you with the city clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm at the beach.
Okay. I don't have any further requests to address at this, at this point in the meeting, to address the council. Therefore, we will move on. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To approve consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays, consent agenda is adopted. Next is a resolution approving an increase in monthly rates for the city collection and disposal of residential and commercial solid waste and recycling service, and our city manager, Mr. Carlos Baia, will explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Like we did at the last meeting, I would ask the council's blessing, if you will, to allow me to do one presentation for both of the first two items on the, on the public hearings. The first will be for the solid waste and recycling, the second will be for water irrigation and wastewater, but we're gonna do one comprehensive presentation, and then the finance director, Mr. Ingram, will have to read into the record the necessary statutory language.
Very good. Thank you. Council, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay, so, good evening. We will be talking this evening about the enterprise funds. So, trying to make this as succinct as possible. So, we're looking at the water, wastewater, and irrigation funds, as well as the sanitation fund. As the council is aware, and we've talked about throughout the summer, we are proposing to increase the rates for water, wastewater, and irrigation by 5% and sanitation by 8.5%. As the public will probably also recall, originally at the first budget workshop back in June, we actually proposed a 10% increase in sanitation, but thanks to the direction of the city council and the great work by the finance team, they managed to work that rate increase down to 8.5%. And why are we facing increases? So, this should come as no surprise if you, anyone that's been following the city business over the last year. We, for example, in wastewater, we send our wastewater to the city of Tampa, and they're, they're proposing a 3% increase. We're looking at increases across the board for wages and insurance. We talked about, for example, even property insurance at the last meeting, in excess of 60%. In sanitation, we've had a 38% increase in our tipping fees over the last three years. And so, all those factors are really putting a significant amount of challenge on those One of the other concerns that we have, whenever we have any sort of accounting instrument, is making sure that we have necessary reserves. So, we try to hit a financial target with our, our special funds, which is looking at, I apologize for the typo, it's just a ratio, a fund balance, operating plus depreciation expense, and that gives us a target of 25%. So, to explain that, let's start with water and sewer. We look at the five-year pro forma, and you see on this pro forma here that, again, if you look about the second row down, you see a 5% increase proposed for fiscal year '24, and you see that 5% increase actually going out for the next several years. And what that allows us to do, based on other assumptions, which we will discuss momentarily, it allows the fund to meet that 25% target, which you can see at the bottom row. Some of the assumptions that go into this pro forma, again, the 5% increase per year, we are looking at a 3% growth rate anticipated for fiscal '24, 2% in '25, and 1.5% growth rate in '26. In '27, '28, we are, we're assuming that the growth rate will be flat, and then interest, we expect a decrease in '24 and '25, and then the interest rate to be flat after going forward. Terms of expenditures, as I mentioned, we have a 3% annual wastewater fee increase from Tampa. We're looking at 6% operational expense increases in '24, 5% in fiscal years '25 through '28, 6% personnel increase in '25, 5% in '26 to '28, and a depreciation 2% increase from fiscal years '24 through '28. One of the other things we've also done to help stabilize the funds and reduce some of the impact on rate increases is to withhold some of the contribution to the renewal and replacement fund for a period of basically two years, but in '26, we'll be starting that replacement again. So, it's, it's always dangerous to look at things in a, in a vacuum, so I wanted to make sure the council and the public was aware of how we would fare compared to our other jurisdictions in Hillsborough County. So, here, what you see on this chart is, you have the water, wastewater, base charges plus water consumption. This water consumption, this is an average example, this would be sort of a mid-size home, about 5,000 gallons of water consumed on a monthly basis. So, what you see here, you look at Temple Terrace with a new rate, we're looking at about $80.75 based on this example. Tampa's at 78, Plant City's at 75.43, and the county is at $90.06. However, you see that little box at the right, it's not the full picture, and I want to make sure the council and the public is fully aware of this, because one thing that we do not do here, and which the other jurisdictions do, is they also assess a stormwater fee. So, if you look at the stormwater fee, which is something that every home will have to pay, in this instance, and Temple Terrace does not assess this fee, you'll see that now the numbers change. So, in Tampa, what, again, was different, now it's 84, 83, Plant City's 84, 2, and then the county goes up to $97.69. So, again, this is, as, as we mentioned during the general fund presentation, it's, it's misleading to just look at one component, you have to look at the totality to really understand the financial impact. In terms of the irrigation rates, so, as, if you are a homeowner in, in Temple Terrace, you might, for example, have a separate meter for irrigation. It'll be more economical for you in the long run if you do that, so we compare our irrigation rates here separately, because not everybody has that separate meter. So, here you see Temple Terrace comes in about, this is based on an average 3,000 gallon consumption for a month. Looking at Temple Terrace, $8.87, the county, the county, excuse me, not the county, Tampa at 9.60, and then Plant City is 17.94. Now, I want to take us to the sanitation fund. As the council knows, this is the fund that was in the toughest straits. We actually had a pretty lengthy discussion early on about how, how are we gonna make the fund solvent, and ensure that we can keep up with the quality that our community expects in terms of our fleet, for example. So, this, you'll see here about the, again, the second row down, you'll see the anticipated increases, so 8.5%, 5%, 5%, 3%, and then 2.5% across the board there, fiscal years '24 through '28. You'll notice at the bottom row, the, the ratio, again, we were trying to hit 25%. You'll see in red there that we're not quite there, but we're, we're leading up to it. So, with good fiscal management, we will get there in fiscal year '26, and we'll be able to maintain it in fiscal year '27. Again, based on certain assumptions, which are outlined here. Again, here, we talk, we're looking at a growth rate about 3% in '24, and 2% in '25, and then 1.5% in '26, and then flat thereafter. And the growth rates here, again, this is based on new homes that might be built, new commercial endeavors, et cetera, so we're looking out to see what's coming on to the tax rules, and what might be customers for sanitation. In terms of expenditures, you see them down there, the expenditures look very similar to what they did for the other fund as well. And this is, these assumptions are based on a commercial side of 7,500 tons of disposal per year, and on the residential, 6,000 tons of disposal. What this means for our individual property owners, our residents, looking at the sanitation side of the house, if you have a standard container and you have collection, which is two times a week, you'll be looking at additional $2.64 per month, which would bring your total sanitation bill to $33.67 a month. For our seniors, senior residents who have a senior discount, for their collection, it'll, it'll be an additional $1.68 a month, for a total bill of $21.48 per month. In comparison, looking at the other communities, the other jurisdictions in Hillsborough County, you'll see actually at, we're coming in at 33.67, Tampa's at 34.91, Plant City's at 27.50, and the county's at 36.46. And one thing I failed to mention, all the numbers that we're showing from the other jurisdictions are either the, the current number or the proposed number. So, if we had proposed numbers that were gonna change, we put those in here, so they compare apples to apples.
But, not, not to interrupt, but there's another factor in here too, in that the others pick up once a week, and we pick up twice a week.
I'm not necessarily certain if that's the case. We did see that some communities do pick up twice a week, like ours, but there, there may be one of these that only does once, but-
I think Tampa's one.
Yep. Happy to take any questions.
Very good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, council members, council member Abel.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. It was a really nice comparison that helps show the full picture. One slide in particular I found very interesting was the one that you said, this isn't the full picture, and then on the next slide, you showed the additional stormwater fee that the other communities add on. And I was just wondering, when I saw that slide, how do we pay for stormwater management infrastructure? They clearly assess that fee for that purpose, and how do we do that?
Basically, right now, you're, well, we've, we've been fortunate in the last couple of years with ARPA funds to take care of a lot of our stormwater needs. That is an anomaly. Typically, unless you have a stormwater utility, like these other communities do, then you're looking at your general fund primarily to pay for, for a lot of those improvements. That, that does put a challenge, particularly in communities here in Florida, where you have a lot of stormwater that comes at you very quickly, and can overwhelm systems, hence the reason why all these communities have this, this fee. So, it, it is a financial impact, and that's one that the communities really have to think about, because if you, if you don't have the fee, then you're gonna be looking at your tax rate, and your out-of-labor tax rate to, to pick up the, the burden in most instances.
Thank you.
Council members, anything else? Questions?
I just have a couple comments.
Council member Fernandez.
And I know we-
Well, questions at this point, comments.
Yeah, so, I don't have, I don't have any questions.
Questions? Okay. If there are no other questions, is there a motion, and then we'll have time for discussion?
Yes, I move to approve the resolution approving an increase in monthly rates for the city collection and disposal of residential, commercial solid waste and recycling services. Second.
Okay, council member Fernandez, now have at it.
So, the, really, it's just to reiterate the conversation that we've been having through the budget process, for those who aren't familiar, the enterprise funds, which are the water and sanitation funds, have to pay for their existence through the usage fees. And the two factors that this city and the city council have no control over are the fees that we get charged. So, for the wastewater treatment, we pay the city of Tampa. We, as a city of Temple Terrace, do not have our own wastewater treatment plant, and we have looked at that in the past. It's extremely expensive, cost prohibitive, to create a plant on our own, but we are, city of Tampa has a monopoly over wastewater treatment, and we have to pay what- City of Tampa has a monopoly over wastewater treatment, and we have to pay what they charge us. So that is an aspect that no matter what kind of management our staff exhibits in managing the funds that they have available, we can't control. So I just, I just want people to understand that because I think our staff over the years has done a very good job at managing and using the funds wisely that are paid in from people using the service. And the same with the sanitation. We, as a city, do not have any other way to dispose of our waste except through Hillsborough County. And Hillsborough County establishes the fee that is going to be charged, and that's the tipping fee. And again, no matter how well our city staff manage the funds that we receive from users, there's no way to control what Hillsborough County charges. So all we can, all we can do is ask our county commissioners to hold the sanitation fund in Hillsborough County accountable for the funds and the fees that they're charging and pay what we have to pay. So I just want to make, because a lot of people don't watch budget, the budget hearings or maybe some of the budget workshops, and then, but they notice when they get an increase in their fees. And I do want to say, I think that our staff has done a very good job. They put a lot of thought into managing the funds that we have with the, to get the maximum results for citizens. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Councilmembers? Mr. Ingram, do you need to read this resolution like the budget, or is this one, we just vote?
I can read it. I don't know that it's necessary for the resolution. It's not the same as the budget.
No, I don't think, yeah, the budget, okay, very good. So this motion is regarding solid waste collection. So if there are no other comments, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? The resolution is adopted? Okay, the next item is very similar, resolution approving an increase in monthly rates for city water irrigation and wastewater services. We saw that presentation already, however, it is a separate item. Mr. Ingram, Mr. Baye, anything to add or just, okay. So we do have an opportunity for public comments. It is a separate item. Are there members of the public who wish to comment? Okay, councilmembers, are there questions regarding the water rates? Very good. Okay, is there a motion?
To approve resolution adopting, approving and adopting a amended water wastewater rate schedule.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Fernandez, I think you covered it very eloquently already, and I want to assure the public that the councilmember Fernandez stated this very, very clearly. And she, in this case, I believe, is speaking for all of us here. We've had extensive conversations about this during the budget workshops, and these are just the realities of costs that we can't control. And so I won't restate everything because I think councilmember Fernandez did a great job, but nobody up here is taking this lightly, I assure you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Next, is a second hearing and second reading of ordinance 1553, adopting the fiscal year 2024 tax levy. I will open the public hearing, and Finance Director Jim Ingram is here to explain.
Yes, this one, we do need to read. This is, as you said, the second public reading and second, second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1553, approving the fiscal year 2024 tax levy. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the city council scheduled two public hearings on the property tax millage levy. The first hearing was held on September 5th, 2023, to solicit public comments on the proposed property tax millage levy prior to the adoption of the annual budget for the 2024 fiscal year. The agenda has been structured to provide the council with the opportunity to comply with both city charter and Florida statutory requirements on the budget and tax levy. The council convened a public hearing on the proposed property tax millage levy and made announcements at the public hearing prior to formal consideration of the attached resolution. The recommended property tax millage rate is 6.455 per $1,000 of assessed value, which is the identical mill from the current fiscal millage, fiscal year millage rate of 6.455. The recommended property tax millage rate of 6.455 is .5796 mills, or 9.86% higher than the rollback rate of 5.8754. Subsequent to the adoption of the resolution, the council should take action to approve the attached ordinance approving the ad valorem tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year. This was approved on first reading of the ordinance on September 5th, 2023, and was scheduled for second and final reading tonight, September 19th, 2023. Main reasons for ad valorem tax revenues increasing. Full funding of the new fiscal year '23, '24, police positions previously only funded, I'm sorry, full funding of the new fiscal year '23 police positions, previously only funded for six months. Continued wage increases to meet obligations of collective bargaining agreements. Funding for the first year of the proposed new three-year police union contract. A proposed 4% cost of living adjustment to general employees, and the proposed implementation of a 2% merit pay increase upon a successful performance evaluation. A 31% increase in overall general liability and property insurance premiums stemming from the statewide fallout from last year's hurricane season. A 15% increase in health insurance funding to continue efforts to make the city's benefit package more attractive. And 2.75 new FTEs added to the general fund. Point five, FTE, is a project administrator in finance that will be shared with the enterprise fund. Point five, facilities foreman, public works, again, shared with the enterprise fund. 1.0, these are two part-time custodians in public works, and 0.75 administrative assistant in human resources. It is recommended that city council adopt ordinance 1553 on second reading. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? If not, councilmember, questions regarding the millage rate? Okay, very good. If there are no questions, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting a millage rate of 6.455 mills for fiscal year 2023 through 2024, said millage rate being .5796 mills, or 9.86% more than the rollback rate of 5.8754 mills, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 1553, adopting the fiscal year 2024 tax levy. Wait, oh, yeah, yes. But I, sorry, go ahead.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? City Attorney.
Just wanted to remind you, this needs to be by roll call.
Got to be a roll call vote.
As is the next one, too.
Yep, okay, very good. Further discussion on the motion? If not, would you please call a roll call?
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yay.
Vice Mayor Chambers?
Yes.
Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Schisler?
Yes.
Councilmember Abel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. The millage rate is adopted unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item is a second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1554, adopting the fiscal year 2024 annual budget. I will open the public hearing, and Mr. Ingram will explain.
In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the first of two public hearings was held on Tuesday, September 5th, at 6:00 PM, to solicit public comment on the annual budget for the upcoming 2024 fiscal year. Notification of the public hearing was initially provided to all property owners in the TRUTH in Millage, otherwise known as TRIM, notices provided by the property appraiser's office in mid-August. The recommended budget was presented to the city council in a series of budget workshops to review and solicit adjustments to the allocations of the budget documents. The total city fiscal year 2024 budget amounts to $102,922,552. A budget summary document is attached illustrating the total budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And this is the format that the state requires us to use for the advertisements for the second hearing. The proposed 2024 budget reflects the following. The millage rate of 6.455 has not changed from last year's millage rate. 8.5% increase in single-family residential and commercial sanitation rates beginning October 1st, 2023. 5% increase in water, sewer, and irrigation rates beginning October 1st, 2023. $183,000 in general fund capital programs minus matching grants. $2,740,900 in community investment tax fund expenditures to include replacing public safety vehicles and equipment, building improvements for fire stations 1 and 2, city hall renovations, and community parks and recreation facility improvements. There's $6,82879 for utility services hardened water facility funded through revenue received through the American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA. An additional $2,555,000 of ARPA-funded stormwater projects. $1,515,000 in non-ARPA-funded street improvement projects, which comes through our street fund. $550,000 to purchase commercial sanitation truck and containers. $68,800 general fund reserve for contingency. 4% COLA salary increase for general employees, and 2% merit pay increase upon a successful performance evaluation. It is recommended that city council adopt ordinance 1554 on second reading. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there any public comments on this? Okay, you see none. Councilmember, questions for Mr. Ingram?
I have a question.
Councilmember Fernandez.
This really has to do with access. Where, or where or how can the public, once, once the budget is final, where can they get access to that, a copy of it, electronic or otherwise?
There is actually, as of today, the, the full budget, numbers by department, I'm sorry, not by department, by fund, is on the website. The city website, there's a page in the finance section that has the proposed budget detail. There's also the proposed budget summary that you all received in your, in the agenda packet. Within 30 days, we are required to post the adopted budget, which is pretty much the same. We will add the, all the departmental detail at that time, so it'll be more robust within, we're required to put that in 30 days after the adoption. So it is on the website.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember, other questions? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting the final operating budget and the capital improvement budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions as are necessary to achieve and accomplish the service programs, authorizing the city manager or the finance director to transfer monies among the departments and programs within any fund, authorizing the city manager or the finance director upon receipt of a donation or grant to appropriate said funds in the expenditure line item of the program as requested by the donor-grantor, providing a severability clause and an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1554, adopting the fiscal year 2024 annual budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Councilmember Schisler?
I just had one comment that I'd like to make on behalf of us up here. Makes it a lot easier with all the hard work that all the directors and all the staff has done to this. People don't realize how much effort and time this really takes, and it's, it's been going on for months and months. To Mr. Ingram and his staff, Jennifer, and everybody involved, thank you. It makes life a lot easier to, when we're given this type of detailed information that we can work with, so thank you.
Thank you.
Other discussion? I'd like to echo that, Ms. Newman, Mr. Ingram, Mr. Baye.
Everybody.
I've gotten a lot of compliments from the public who watched the first reading of this, the first, the PowerPoint, the presentation, the level of detail that was provided. The public, most of them don't come to budget workshops, but having sat through budget workshops since 2016, this was the best year ever. Just the details, the plan, I mean, we clear, it's very clear to us what we were approving, and that hasn't always been quite the case. So thank you again for your hard work. Thank you for overseeing all that. And, okay, would you please call the roll call?
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chambers?
Yes.
Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Schisler?
Yes.
Councilmember Abel?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you.
Next is a second public hearing and resolution approving SPR 23-03 for the site development of four townhomes located at 8701 Overlook Drive. I will open the public hearing and ask anybody who intends to speak tonight to stand and be sworn in by the city clerk.
Yes.
Very good. City Attorney, would you please poll for ex parte communications?
If anyone on council has received any ex parte communication regarding this item, this is your opportunity and your requirement to reveal what that ex parte communication was. If it was a written communication, please provide a copy of that to the clerk's office for the record. Whether written or oral, please state who that communication was with, when that took place, and what the sum and substance of the communication was, and beginning with councilperson Fernandez.
I have none.
I have had none.
Had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Ms. Shoshon and our community development director, Mike Sherman, is here to explain. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, for consideration by the council, is a second hearing for resolution approving Site Plan 23-3. It's a site plan review application for the development of four attached residential dwelling units located at 8701 Overlook Drive. The owner of the property is Race One LLC, and the applicant is Development Support Services This is a... This is, uh, slide says it's a general area map showing the CRA location, as well as the location of the subject property at the intersection of Grove Hill Road and Overlook Drive. It's about .24 acres. Those future land use map categories, DMU 35. The current zoning is PD. And, uh, and that's it. So this is, sort of shows an aerial of the property. It's surrounded by single-family, multifamily uses. This development will fit quite nicely within that mix of densities and types of residential uses. Our land development code says there will be two public hearings for site plans associated with planned developments, and this, tonight, is the second public hearing. These are the site standards. Lot width is 140 feet. The depth is about 75 feet. The area, again, just .24 acres, which is a little over 10,000 square feet. Side yard setback is eight. The rear yard setback is 7.4. Front setback's 35. The building height's 35 feet. Parking is for eight automobiles. That meets our code. And access will be from Grove Hill Road. Again, these are our, the elevations of these beautiful units. They're gonna really look nice in that neighborhood. It's the front, there's the rear elevation. They have, as you all know, done a lot of effort to try and meet our architectural design standards for new construction in our CRA, and I think they've done a fine job. Previous actions, the Development Review Committee reviewed these application materials. We had three rounds of comments and responses. At this point, all comments and recommendations have been, have been addressed. And at the city council hearing on September 5th, the council approved on first reading with conditions. So staff is recommending that the council adopt this resolution with conditions. And these conditions are, the proposed development shall allow construction of four single-family units. And what this basically says is that they will be following all site plans, adopted site plan standards when they develop the site. When, if they have a dumpster, they'll have to enclose it per code. They'll have on the, at the building permit stage, we'll have them show us where the site triangle is. Deliniate bicycle parking and just a comment of overhangs may not extend three feet into any required yard. That's my presentation. I can answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience tonight, and he may want to say something as well.
Good, thank you, Mr. Sherman. Does the applicant like to make some comments? Welcome, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Leaks, Tampa. Mayor Ross, councilmembers. Just wanted to thank you for your continued support of this project. Mr. Thomas is traveling with his family on vacation, and he sends his regrets for not being here this evening. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Leaks. Appreciate that. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, very good. Councilmembers, any questions for the applicant or Mr. Sherman? Councilmember Schisler?
Mr. Sherman. Usually it's Troy comes up with new words. Could you go back to the first plot, plot layout way back in the beginning?
I can, yes, sir. Just a second. That one?
Nope. Nope. What's a DU? Or is that a type?
That's downtown mixed-use 35. That's the future, downtown mixed-use 35. It's a future land use map category.
DU? Okay, all right. Okay.
35 dwellings per acre maximum.
Okay, all right. Didn't, it was a new, it was a new term, and I couldn't find anything for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And although this is a resolution, we will, yeah, we're gonna ask you to read the title of the resolution.
Resolution of the city council of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, approving final site plan review application SPR 23-03 for .24 plus-minus acres of land located at 8701 Overlook Road, Overlook Drive, folio number 201584-0000, to permit the construction of a multi-unit townhome development of four attached single-family residential dwellings, subject to any conditions of approval imposed by city council, provided for conflicts and provided for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve SPR 23-03 for site development of four townhomes located at 8701 Overlook Drive on second hearing, second public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion of the motion? Not all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I know this has been a long road, and thank you for your patience, and please pass that on. And also know that now that this is over, we can talk. So give me a call. All right. Next item is a resolution sunsetting the police corporals, master corporals, sergeants, and master sergeants' current labor agreement and approving a new labor agreement effective October 1st, 2023 through September 30th of 2026. And our deputy chief of police, Rob Staley, is here to explain.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I come before you tonight seeking approval for ratification of the contract between the FOP, or the Fraternal Order of Police, and the City of Temple Terrace. In July, the FOP presented two articles for renegotiation, and we met with council to receive guidance on how to proceed. I'm pleased to report that after three meetings over five weeks, we have tentative agreement from the FOP. There are five substantive changes to the contract, the first being the wages article. This is a three-year contract and will sunset the previous contract on September 30th, and then continue from three years from that, from that point. For wages, we have an increase to the step plan and an increase to the COLA of 3% to 4.5%. There was also some substantive changes to the VCT time, or vacation compensatory time, that the, that language has been removed from the contract. Finally, in the promotional process, the union voted to get rid of the promotional process and leave all promotions to the chief of police at his sole discretion. And with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, deputy chief. Are there members? I do have one member of the public who's already requested. Mr. Ritter has requested to speak, and he has declined. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
I do want to note that there is a, a member of the FOP who wishes to address the council, if at all.
Very good, well, we'll hear from him now. Thank you, chief. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you, detective?
Good, how are you?
Good.
City councilmember, city manager, mayor, would like to just thank you guys for the opportunity to present these amendments to the articles of our agreement with the city. In my short five years of working in this department, I have met nothing but undying support from the city, as well as every single individual one of you guys. So I would like to say on thanks to behalf of the department and the FOP that, just thank you guys for the time and the chance.
Thank you, detective. Counsel, are there any questions for the deputy chief? Okay. If there are no questions, is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution sunsetting the police corporals, master corporal sergeants, master sergeants, and current labor agreement and approving a new labor agreement effective October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Resolution is adopted. Next item is related to this. It's a resolution sunsetting the police officers, detectives, senior police officers, and master police officers' current labor agreement and approving a new labor agreement effective October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2026. Then the deputy chief will explain this.
There's no substantive changes other than the ones that we discussed in the previous presentation. I do want to point out that I've been involved in negotiations for 19 years, and this is probably by far the easiest negotiation. I want to commend the people that sat across from me at the table with the FOP, as well as your staff. Jen from finance and Tony from HR were both amazing representatives and made things very seamless for the entire process. But there's no other changes other than the ones that we outlined in the original presentation.
Very good, thank you, chief. Mr. Ritter, are you declining to comment on this one also? Okay, are there other members of the public who wish to comment? Detective Lynch, anything to add other than your previous comments?
No, sir, other than just thank you guys.
Okay, very good. Councilmembers, are there questions for the deputy chief? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution sunsetting the police officers, detectives, and senior police officers and master police officers' current labor agreement and approving a new labor agreement effective October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? Discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, deputy chief. Thank you, detective. Next item is a resolution approving the purchase of a replacement fire command vehicle with lighting and radio package. And Fire Chief Ian Kemp is here to explain. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, honorable mayor, council, city manager. Before you is a resolution approving a purchase of a replacement fire command vehicle, which includes lighting and radio package. As part of the fire department's replacement plan funds were budgeted and included in this fiscal year 2324 Community Investment Tax Fund for the purchase of a fire command vehicle, lighting, and lighting package. The total cost of the vehicle and lighting package is $54,990.35. The purchase of this vehicle will be made from Bartow Ford in Bartow, Florida under the Charlotte County Contract 2021000541. The new vehicle, replacing a vehicle that is past due for replacement. Once this vehicle is received, the vehicle placed, will be placed, replaced, and will be delivered to Public Works for the sale or auction in accordance with city policy. The fire department staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution approving the purchase of one 2023 Ford Explorer Command Vehicle, including factory-installed light package and radio. This purchase is being made utilizing the city's current vehicle replacement program.
Thank you, chief. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Seeing none, councilmember questions for Chief Kemp? I do have one quick one. How old is the car or the SUV we're replacing?
I think it's nine years old and has 115,000 miles.
And the only reason I ask, I'm sure you're way ahead of me on this because you guys do a great job with this, but is it, is this vehicle better than like a fleet car that we have for general staff to drive around? In other words, is this, would it behoove us to keep this one and then get rid of some old clunker that we have that people are driving?
This, one we're getting rid of is pretty much a clunker. But you can have it.
Well, I've seen some staff cars that like pool cars that like our staff drive around, and some of those are pretty.
I, I would be certainly willing to let, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I, I think what we'll end up doing is we'll have the fleet, the fleet division of Public Works will evaluate, evaluate all their vehicles.
Make an assessment.
And make an assessment. If this one's better than something else we have, then we'll get rid of the other item.
I just wanted to put that on the record because you read it into the record that we're gonna sell it, and I wanted it to be open that if we got a 1972 Pinto out here, maybe we should keep this one.
Sure.
So, okay, very good. Thank you, is there a motion?
Move to approve the purchase of a replacement fire command vehicle with lighting and radio package. Second.
Motion is second. Discussion of the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? We shall buy you a new car. Very good. Carryover council business, I have one quick item. As you know, the annual performance evaluations for the charter officers were just completed. And typically, this is the time of year where we discuss the issue of raises for the three charter officers. There's no automatic escalator in the contracts for the three charter officers. It requires council action to adjust, to give them a COLA if we deem appropriate to do so. Historically, at least since I've been on council anyway, we typically give them the same thing that the general employees get, but that is a decision made every year by council. And we do the evaluations in September, so that we have recently looked at everybody's opinion of their performance, or most everybody's opinion of their performance. So is there a motion to provide annual increases for the charter officers?
Move to approve annual increase for the three charter officers consistent with the general employment rates for general employees.
So let me ask a clarifying question of the motion because in the budget, we changed this, and everybody's getting 4% on October 1st, and then an additional 2% on the date of their evaluation. We just did their evaluation, so is it your intent to give them 6%?
Yes.
Effective October 1st?
Effective October 1st.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, good. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Yes.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor.
A question about the 2%. For regular employees, it's on their anniversary date now, correct? Correct?
Yes, yes.
The 2% is on that pursuant to a favorable evaluation. Do we have any employees that will not receive their 2% to the end of next year? That may have an evaluation that just was completed in September? Does that carry over like we're asking for you guys? Or we're asking?
So, correct, there will be, there will be employees. Obviously, some employees, well, their anniversary will come up immediately, and others will be throughout the year. There may be employees, I think what you're asking is, would their anniversaries look later in the year? Is that when their evaluation?
Yes.
At that point, exactly. So if they're, whenever their anniversary date is triggered, that's when their evaluation will be done shortly before that. Hopefully, within a matter of two or three weeks before that, it's in time to get processed. If they're satisfactory, then yes, it would be, it would trigger a 2% at that point.
Okay, I guess what I'm getting at is we have regular employees that may have had evaluations done, like our charter officers, and they're gonna be treated different. But your motion wants to treat them the same. Well, your motion really wasn't to treat them the same.
It's consistent with what the policy is, consistent with what the practice is for the general employees. So if the time, however, the timing would work out. So I mean, it'd be up to the 6%, I'm not saying just 4%, I'm saying the overall 6%, however, the timing works. And Mr. Baia, he's, he's October 1st. And, and I think.
November.
Okay, so you're, I don't know Cheryl, when you're.
July.
July.
The, the difference is kind of apples and oranges in a way because the evaluation date does not correspond to their hire date like it does to everybody else. And their evaluation date was picked simply because the beginning of the fiscal year starts October 1st, and so we wanted to evaluate them before we had this discussion. Because it was a year when we were having this discussion, and one of the council members pointed out that we haven't done our evaluation yet, so we don't know if they're performing well or not. So.
I'm not sure how we could change it to accommodate the.
Maybe in this motion, that you leave out evaluation because they've already had their positive evaluation, and they treated like regular employees 4% and 2% on their anniversary date, which is what general employees do. Or do something entirely different. Your motion said 6% now.
I'll leave, I'll leave my motion the way it is. I'd prefer to leave it the way it is, upper down. I don't know how else to parse it.
Well, I think what the vice mayor's suggesting is we could, just because they've all had their evaluation, we could give them the 4% October 1st and the other 2% on their anniversary date. I think is what he's saying. Because if they were a general employee, they'd be getting their evaluation on the end.
Okay, all right. But, but that was the intention. It would, we would follow the same principles we're doing with the general employees.
That's what that would, that's what that would accomplish, I think.
That's, that's what I, that's what I said along the same lines as the general employees, not knowing the specific anniversary dates of everybody.
If that's your desire, then it's gonna require an amendment to your motion to express that because your original motion would give them 6% October 1st.
Okay, all right, on the, on the verbal.
That was at your.
Okay.
We could, he could still do that, but I was just trying to clarify the, the part about the anniversary date.
the anniversary date.
Well, it would be on their, the two, the additional 2% would come on their anniversary date instead of all October 1st. That would make it the same as the general employees.
Okay, all right. Take your second back. I take my second back. Okay. Restate the motion.
Now you're getting into higher math. I'm never going to keep up with this.
Before Pam has a heart attack on us. Move to, I don't know where I'll start this. Move to approve charter officer pay increases for the next fiscal year based upon the current policy used for general employees of 4% October 1st, and then the additional 2% based upon the evaluations on their anniversary date.
Very good. Second. Motion and a second. Is there discussion of the motion? Is that sufficiently clear? You got it? Okay. Discussion of the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? Thank you, Mr. Schisler. That was brave. Any other council business? I believe we have some from Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes. So at the last meeting, I brought back from the Riverwatch Task Force a request to find out about having a permit pulled by the city to enable volunteers to pull and remove Brazilian pepper plants on city-owned property, which the Brazilian pepper plant is an invasive species and not a desirable species on the river. So at that meeting, Mr. Tinch reported back on the process, and I think maybe a good idea to have you come. And we do have the chairperson of the Riverwatch Task Force here who would like to comment.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. So what I basically laid out during that meeting was, we can have a volunteer group come in, identify a parcel of land that the city owns that's adjacent to the Hillsborough River waterway that would have some riparian rights, there's a new word for you.
And I have heard that before.
You, okay. That would allow us to have volunteers go in and remove the Brazilian peppers from the landward side of the river. We wouldn't want them to be out on the water removing those in the waterward side. It would require additional specialized equipment, and I think there's a lot more liability associated with that. So I think we would have them go through our typical forms that are filled out by, say, Parks and Rec when we have volunteers. They would then be able to come in. The land that I'm speaking of is down along West River. There's that long park section there on West River. So they would be able to go out within certain areas that the city owns property and then owns the waterward side of the property as well, that they could remove those Brazilian peppers along the edge and pull them onto the land. We would then have the solid waste folks take those away. We have a site that they can be brought to, likely incinerated if I had to guess, through the waste energy plant. So there is an option for that to, to take place. If we get into the wetland environment, we would have to permit that effort. If we were to, say, find some of these Brazilian pepper trees that weren't within the wetland environment, that would simply just be a maintenance type effort. So we would have to permit through the EPC and also through the state on that effort, DEP. So that's, that's how it would be laid out.
But the location that you're proposing would not require this permitting?
We would have to go out and identify the location of the plants and see where they fall out jurisdictionally. They fall out in the wetland areas. It would require, if they do not, it would not.
How do you do that without a survey?
You could impose a survey, or you could do, likely the easiest way would be just a blanket management plan, have that approved by, say, the district. That would take some doing, though, on our part. I'd likely have to get and require involvement from one of our engineering consultants to come in, develop a management plan for how we would deal with Brazilian peppers on city lands, and whatever that would take and permit that, generally, those can go through as an exception. Because the, you're removing a nuisance exotic species, even though it's in a wetland environment, you're actually improving the quality of that system.
So you have to have a permit from the state in order to remove an invasive species that we don't want?
Correct, if it's in a wetland environment. It's considered restoration.
How big are these plants that are in the location where you think, I mean, are these like 30-foot trees? Are they this big? Or are they stuff you can just pull out? I mean, how?
They're very weedy in nature. They're, it is a tree of sorts. It doesn't grow a lot vertically, it's more horizontally. And they grow kind of in a large ball, if you will. So they can get quite big around, as big around as, say, this area here. But generally, they don't get that tall, probably in the range of, say, 15 to 20 feet. But they can spread. They're like a bush, almost, versus a, like an oak tree that grows laterally.
Okay. Councilmembers, I'm going to ask Mr. Lewis to come up. Are there questions while Troy's standing up here?
Yeah, well, it's for, it's for this, this is invasive species, which means unless we take out all of it, even the private residents, it's going to come back onto the city property again?
Right, so what you would end up doing is cutting it down to the stump and then treating the stump with a hericidal treatment to make it.
Okay, but I mean, if we have property adjacent to private residents, if they have it, it's just going to come back. Unless it's eradicated along the whole, the whole shoreline or river line.
Yes.
Then we're just, we're not accomplishing anything, are we?
You're, you're definitely going to be fighting a battle there. So the idea would be to get with the neighbors in those areas and explain what we're doing and ask them to kind of do the same thing on their own property.
Yes, Councilmember Abel.
How fast-growing is this plant?
It's very fast-growing. It can go from a small plant, say, two to three foot high, to a bush as large as this area within probably three to five years.
It was basically like a python in the Everglades?
Yeah. I've, you know, in my previous life as an environmental scientist, I worked on a lot of restoration projects, and we would go in and it would cover hundreds of acres so thick that you couldn't even walk through it.
So my next question is kind of a judgment call, but considering the effort it takes to remove the Brazilian pepper, how, how, how great is the benefit?
Well, it's, what it does is it opens that area back up for native, native plants. The rate at which the Brazilian pepper can reproduce and expand is so high that you want to definitely get those out early on. If you've spent much time on the river, there's a, the area around the bridge, for some reason, seems to be kind of a haven for Brazilian pepper. And in the last couple of years, I've seen it go from a few small trees to now dozens of very fairly large, bushy Brazilian peppers, so it does move quite quickly. So you want to get those out as quickly as you can.
Thank you.
Mr. Mead, welcome. Or Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry.
I'll respond to anything.
That's all right. I'm sorry. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen and women, for having me speak. So thank you to our liaison officer, Tinch, for identifying some of these areas that are contending with this plant. As Gil mentioned, what we're approaching here is, you know, metaphoric war. They will keep coming back, and we will keep having to fight this battle. But what we're setting here is a methodology for not only the process that the city will need to take to set up volunteer efforts, but as well as an education opportunity for the community in order to teach them how to take this out. Because it's not just cutting it down with a weed whacker. It is, some people react to it like poison ivy. It's not, once again, if you cut it down, it's going to grow right back up. So, and it's not just spraying round up. So there, there is a process in taking this out. Understanding that if we don't take it out, then our riverways will be covered in this stuff. They will be inaccessible, unusable, and it will damage property values. Tampa is taking, Tampa Proper is taking remediation efforts against this plant. And it should be part of, I think, our mission to protect our riverways. You know, the Riverwatch Task Force, one of our missions is to make sure that the rivers are usable by the community. And whether this is tying up fishing lines with the, with the pepper plant, or, you know, making it so that you can't launch your boat, it will make Temple Terrace less beautiful, for sure.
So you guys really want to go out there and do this?
No.
You're prepared to?
But I will, yes.
I'm listening to Mr. Tinch, and I'm like, are you, do you, you really, I'm sure, I'm assuming you do, you know, I mean, you guys know a lot, but I mean, you're, you know what you're taking on here, right?
Yeah. So this is something that my task force, my board, has been very passionate about. And they really want to do it. All right? And as chairman of that board, I do as, you know, my, my fellow members ask me to do. And so they're very passionate about this. I do see the ecological damage that this plant has on our community and the damage to the recreational benefit of living in this community.
So the ask from us would be to identify the area, identify where the wetlands begin that we can't go into without a permit, and then to provide the dumpsters and disposal of the?
So the area that's being identified by Mr. Tinch is right there. So it's, I'll go back to the microphone. It's about 2,300 linear feet along the riverway. Once again, this, this is proof of concept, if you will. All right? We don't want to engage in this war until we know really what it will take. So really, what's being discussed today is a question of liabilities, getting a volunteer organization, working on behalf of Temple Terrace. There's, there's waivers that need to be done, there's legal stuff that needs to be done. Once again, we're setting the, setting the precedence of what steps need to be done in order for us to combat this effectively.
Well, it's not very complicated, because Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful does these cleanups all the time, so those waivers already exist.
Correct.
I mean, we already have a city waiver. So if I understand the ask correctly, the city would be asked to designate the areas this is, to establish, and then to provide disposal of the waste.
That's correct. There may be, again, there may be a small unbudgeted requirement if we had to come up with a master plan for the area. That would be something that we currently do not have in our budget or have planned to do.
Okay, but if we didn't go into the wetlands, we wouldn't have to do that.
Right, but you would have to have someone go out and identify what, where those limits were located, similar to what we did for the park property, where we said, okay, the jurisdictional limits of the wetland extend to this point. There's actually a line then established.
Okay, so are you saying that that would have to be done, or it may have to be?
It may have to be done. I would, we're going to need to dig into what make Tampa Bay Beautiful or Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful, how they do that, how they go through that process. Because if they don't have some sort of management plan, I'd be surprised that they can go out and just kind of remove those species. You generally have to have some sort of management plan in place, or some structure of a management plan that you can work with under.
What's involved in you finding out whether we have to do that or not?
Staff time to, to do research on this, or likely because of our limited staff availability, we would probably, again, tap into one of our consultants to find out what Tampa Bay, make Tampa, Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful is doing in this instance.
We can't just call DEP and ask them, can we take out Brazilian peppers?
We could, we could do that as well. Sure.
I mean, not to be flip, but.
Yeah.
We need to hire a consultant to figure out if we can take out an invasion.
No, no, we could.
It seems like this is. City attorney.
Florida DEP has classified, has a section that classified this as a prohibited aquatic plant. There's a law that prohibits the sale and/or movement of the species. The fact that they've already got Section 62C-52.011 probably speaks to what the requirements are on this and which can and cannot do.
Okay. Is it reasonable if the council approves this conceptually? Is it reasonable that between you two, that we could determine what the rules are without hiring a consultant to figure this out?
Yes.
And so that we can give Mr. Lewis's group a, can we do this or not kind of thing? Yes, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. In my past employment here at the city, as Lees's Services Director, we had, at that time, a parks planner, Dayton Carver, and he was in charge of all the master plans for the ELAP properties, and this is one of them on the map we just saw. And we had programs to eradicate Brazilian pepper and air potato, and he had many volunteer efforts with the local scouts and local neighborhoods to do that. After I left, I think it was all restructured, that position doesn't exist, but I don't know if Mr. Langfeld has access to all those old reports, because in there delineates wetland lands and what could be done and what can't be done. I don't know of any of those reports. That's probably at least 10, 15 years ago.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This morning, after a meeting with the city manager in which we discussed this project, I did go back and start digging through archives and looking for this, these records. I was kind of looking at it from a different angle. But there are records that are still in place regarding these projects, and I can go back and look at this from a different perspective. The angle that I was looking at it is because West River Preserve is managed through an agreement that we have with Florida Communities Trust, similar to Riverfront Preserve, there are regulations regarding what we can and cannot do with this property. I did reach out earlier today to our contact with FCT, which is under DEP. So I may be able to kill two birds with one stone here when I finally get to communicate with this gentleman about how best we can go about removing the Brazilian peppers from this property. So there are some cogs in this wheel that are already turning to figure out how best to go about doing it.
Okay. So again, assuming the count, this is the council's desire, is it reasonable to assume that somebody will be able to come back to us with the outcome of these discussions and tell us whether this is feasible or not?
I think that's reasonable to assume that we can do that, yes, sir.
Okay, because I, I think, I mean, we have a group of citizens who's desperately trying to volunteer to do important service for the benefit of the city. We want to do everything we can. I mean, we don't want to do anything improper, but we don't want to put up roadblocks either if there's some way to make this possible for them to, I mean, we, it's a good problem to have. We have a group of people that want to do something for us. So we can get a future report? City Manager, is this okay with you? Sound, sound good. Councilmembers, is this all right with you? I don't want to speak for the council, but.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm in favor of it, just, just everybody knowing the, the, the time constraints and the project constraints that Public Works already has, as well as Leisure Services. So it's, we've got a lot that we got to get done this year. They're trying to.
Yeah.
Time deadlines.
Right.
But yes, I applaud that.
Hopefully, this isn't as complicated as it sounds, and we just put some dumpsters out there and let Mead go out there and pull it.
Yeah, it's, it's really not.
It really shouldn't be, you know, but, okay. You guys can work together. Council's good with all this. Mr. Lewis, thank you. Thank you to your group for your willingness to volunteer. Thank you for your patience in sitting this late in a meeting and.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, any other council business? Carryover business? Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor.
Well, see, there, I brought it up last time, so it's really a board report. I wanted to report, last meeting, I talked about the Hillsborough County Arts Council, potential of the grant funding being removed from the county budget. That was heard on the last council, County Commission meeting. It was brought up. A motion was made to remove the funding, and it failed three to four. So the funding's in place for one more year, but it was close.
It was close.
Anyway, I wanted to report on that.
Thank you. That's close. Very good. New business in board reports.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no.
No, no, no.
Sorry. I wanted, earlier, Dr. Basham from King talked about the upcoming parade and, homecoming parade and activities for King. He didn't mention time. So the King High Homecoming Parade around the first fairway is going to be Thursday, the 28th, at 5:00. And that is, again, starting at the ball field, Temple Terrace Elementary, going around. Please, everybody come out and support King. It is our high school. You can come stand out on the fairway and wave. In fact, you can do it twice. Stand on one side of the fairway, wave, run to the other side and wave again. But the kids really appreciate it. And then on Saturday, the 30th, at 1:00 is a fundraiser for the King High Alumni Association. It's a golf tournament at the golf course. We still have openings for teams. It's the main funding for the Alumni Association. An example, last year, the association donated over $10,000 to improve the look of King High from Sly and 56th Street, new landscaping, benches, signage and stuff. So we continually put money back into King High, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. While you're on the roll inviting people and stuff, I'll let you carry on. The red part.
The red part? Okay, I can, which one's red? Oh. Oh. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Okay, I'd like to invite the public to come out to National Night Out on October 3rd. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock at Mission Hill Church on 56th Street. Our council meeting will be very short that night, people, so remember that. So I hope everybody can attend that. Did the chief want to talk about that? Usually he does, but-
You did a great job, but I can throw up my socks.
No. If I'm still going. Close up. Here, here's the hat. There we go, okay. Now I'm done. Now I'm done. No, I'm good.
Okay. Any new business? Other new business? All right, very good. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to, having finished my first budget here at the city of Temple Terrace, I wanted to make sure that I thanked our entire leadership team. All of the department directors, deputy directors, support staff were amazing, really kept me on task, and gave me all the support I needed, and did a great job, and they presented a great budget, and we had, I think it was a great experience, actually, for everybody involved. So thank you very much to them. I want to thank the council as well for your support and for the evaluation process and the, and the raises as well. So thank you on my, my behalf, as well as I'm sure the city attorney and the city clerk. Looking forward to, hopefully, many more years here at the city of Temple Terrace, doing good work with the support of council. So that's my first thing. My second thing, as Vice Mayor Chambers just mentioned, the October meeting will be very short. Just as a reminder to the council, I will be, I will not be here for that meeting, but I will be appointing Police Chief Albano as acting city manager, so please be easy on him. We want to keep him. And, and I wish everybody a great National Night Out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bea. City attorneys' report?
I have nothing.
Is there anything else to come before the council? Councilmembers, anything else? Directors, anything else? Anything we need to talk about? If not, we will be adjourned.